Seven's update.
Hi, how's it going?
You're up.
Thank you. That's what more of us. Um, we'll just go through and briefly introduce ourselves and then I'll hand out some of the materials and we'll just provide a brief update on what we've been up to over the last few months. Kristen Brooks, I'm the Talent Specialist at the BDCC. Thank you again for having us.
I'm Kristy Beatty and I'm the newest hire there. I'm the Pipelines and Pathways Coordinator.
I'm Jen Stromston, I'm the Director of Programs.
And Bobby Kilburn, Director of Finance Grant Management.
Like I said, I'm just gonna hand out a few items. Um, we have our annual report, uh, some other kind of program updates in this folder and then I'm gonna pass it to Jen. Thank you. Who's gonna talk about some of, um, the other packet that I'm gonna hand out. But just a little bit of about data, I know that we brought this to you, um, the last time that we were at the Select Board Meeting, but this is just a little bit different and I will pass it forward to Jen.
Okay, so really briefly, 'cause you have in your packet, you can look at it at your leisure, I think last year we did is just tried to kind of present some of the commuter dare, which is how we understand who is in your community, who works in your community, who lives in your community, a little bit of how people are moving around, where the jobs are. Um, what you have is a slightly more, um, palatable present- presentation of this. Um, we have, we're lucky enough to have access to this, um, data tool at this point. Um, and so it gives you some demographics and some of the things, it, it kind of points to some of the things we're paying attention to. You know, the shift, um, in age, um, which obviously affects the workforce and sort of who's, um, in the population here and also some of the, frankly, some of the positive things about quality of life here, like sort of low violent crime, frankly. Um, so, the other thing here is, so this is the, the population map, um, which is like a heat map of where people primarily live, uh, places where people are primarily kind of living, so like bedroom communities-ish, it's not really a great term for it, but that's what we have, um, versus places, um, that really tend to have the concentration of jobs in the region. And, and really Westminster is one of the higher concentration areas. It's really, you know, it's part of, um, it's sort of Rockingham Job Shed, we would think of. So these are things you kind of know about your community, but I think sometimes it's good to see them in context of the region as we think about, you know, what are the different, um, challenges that community has, have, and, and also what are the assets that you have. Um, the other thing in here that I just want you to sort of look at, which is how we look at the economy, which is, um, this industry characteristic says sort of what the jo- what the jobs are, what the industries are in the area, those little lines are just indicating what the national norms are, so it gives you a sense of like where we're different from the rest of the country, which I think helps give you some perspective. And then the last one, um, which I feel is really important because it tells the story of this region in contrast to maybe the story of the state's economy, um, is about industry and jobs growth and, you know, we are constantly needing to remind our state level friends and also our, the national agencies that we work with, the federal agencies, that manufacturing is growing and doing well in Wyndham County and it is not necessarily the same everywhere else and it is obviously changed and evolving, um, but, you know, it's on the table and that, and that's not the only story, but it's one example of the ways in which we try to highlight the distinctive character of this economy so that we can make sure that, you know, career training and education resources and other resources are appropriate to the needs here so that people are getting the training that's relevant to the employers that we have here, um, so they can actually find, you know, real jobs in the real economy here, so. Um, I wanted to speak to just two other things briefly and then I'll turn it over to the most interesting person here tonight, which is Chris- Kristy.
She's a workhorse.
So we were asked about, there's a leadership, uh, training conference that was put on, um, by the VCRD Vermont Council on Rural Development, we were asked, sort of, we were participating. So, our Southern Vermont Economy Project Coordinator who came here tonight, but she works with sort of all the communities directly, trying to create resources, webinars, trainings, conferences, broadband, um, different issues affecting town officials. Um, so she was actually a presenter and kind of part of that conference and we also directed funding through that program to just pay for, um, eleven folks to go to that. So, we often don't feel like it's the best use of our resources to reinvent the wheel. They're really, you know, great organizations and things that maybe people don't have access to, 'cause you don't have funding to send a Select Board member or a town manager or something, so, um, you know, often we're participating and sometimes we're finding a way to just pay, you know, through these, this is a USDA funded program, for instance, so we have the ability to subsidize folks to do that. Um, and then the last thing I just, you know, wanted to sort of highlight, which Kristy will touch on a bit, you know, one of the things that unites us all is sort of the workforce challenge, you know, those demographics are driving a reality where we have a lot of different employers with a lot of different needs for workforce, like, we get it, um, and we have been building a system to try to address that, um, and that's at a lot of different phases of the sort of workforce spectrum. Um, but one of the things I just want you to sort of be aware of is we have some new recruiting efforts this year, we've developed some materials, we're sending, Kristen has always gone out and done internship recruiting on campuses, she's going further afield to career fairs, um, and we, we have a website at this point, silvermont.com, which is really about making sure people see the region as a place that has employers and opportunities, not just skiing. Um, and so, we, she's been out so far to Albany, to a really giant kind of career expo, to Springfield, Mass. Um, we'll continue to be going out, augmenting her campus visits with some of that, um, broader outreach to build awareness and connect directly, frankly, with people who are, um, in the workforce and would consider either commuting to or relocating to this area at a variety of, of levels. So that's kind of our biggest new thing that we've been building towards with the materials and the online stuff and actual outreach, so. I'll leave it there.
Yeah, is it time for me?
Hi.
I had just a question.
Yeah.
What is a combination, why is combination food service put together?
Oh, you know, I, right, I, I agree. I mean, the federal data is what it is. You know, it's not, it's not the greatest, I think in some ways it's an okay approximation of tourism hospitality. It's not perfect. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, when we look at it, we kind of can go deeper and break it apart a little bit so we understand.
So that would be like the ski area, right?
Absolutely, yeah, and supporting the industry, yep.
Great. Hi, uh, my name is Kristen Beatty and as I said, I'm the newest hire, um, at BDCC. I think I'm entering my seventh week right now. So, um, I am tasked with, uh, going into four separate high schools, Bellas Falls, uh, Brattleboro, Twin Valley, and Linnan Gray, um, to connect students to, uh, work-based learning opportunities and other flexible pathways to, uh, careers. So not just sending folks to college necessarily, but finding, um, growing, uh, uh, employment clusters and, and helping kids navigate their way to those, those jobs and those careers. Um, so it's pretty exciting. Um, I have been in each of the schools, I'm in the schools one day a week. Uh, in Bellas Falls, I've been working with, um, Mark Gibbo, who's the, uh, Work-Based Learning Coordinator there, um, and he's fantastic, he's doing some great work with personal learning plans, um, and we're just really trying to connect them to, uh, more pipelines, more employer pipelines, so that kids can get exposure to other careers, get excited, get passionate about their futures. Um, so that's what I've been tasked with. Um, I've been meeting also with a, a lot of the directors, uh, guidance counselors, um, and the Director of Guidance, actually, I met with her two days ago and I'll be meeting with the principal next week as well. So hopefully getting myself into the school community, getting to know the kids and connecting them to, um, prosperous futures. Yeah, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course, yeah.
I think I read or heard someplace where, might have been on Rockingham, that you went, that somebody went in, and I'm not sure if it was you, and went after Whitney Blakes and several to find out what they wanted and then went back to the high school and actually coordinated some young kids to know what they're doing. Always been my biggest criticism, I've never seen anybody from you to go around all the businesses around here to see one, what are they looking for? Before you go and recruit the children, you need to know what we have to offer before we lose the children. And, I, I don't know, is that something on schedule?
Yes.
It is, that's coming, and I think one of the things, I've been cautioned, 'cause that sort of falls into my sphere with Alspec, who also can be sort of our workforce center coordinator, um, you know, I've just been cautioned not, don't ask the question before we think we have something to answer it, you know, meaning, I don't wanna say, you know, do you need people with this skillset until I think we have some, at least small answers about how to improve that pipeline, and, because that starts to make people sort of disappointed. So we're, there's a parallel process going on about sort of developing, we're involved in the town pipeline management with the state, so we're, that stuff is going on, but we are not sure that that's gonna reach deep enough into small employers, we kind of know it's not. Um, so we're kind of working on our own process to do some demand assessment targeted, to ask the right questions, so we know what we're looking for, so. Perfect question, 'cause I worry about it all day.
Okay, Westminster, we do have a lot of companies in that whole area. Uh, one I'm looking for, we're trying to find fifteen employees.
Yes.
So we're bringing in another whole HR department, but that was the criticism, is where is your workforce coordinator to work with them? And we've been out in Springfield, Mass, Hartford, Kennebec ourselves, recruiting, getting them to come here, to live here, on it, and there's all kinds of jobs and, and up through, all those transportation companies, they're all looking for the same thing. And I think if you came and saw what Westminster has to offer first, then went back to the high school, uh, 'cause it's, there's, there's kids in there that could be, we offer free education, we send them to college, we give them the education they do, also, it's a great learning tool for them to come in and realize that there's many job opportunities and you can start there and then actually advance.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, the thing is about exposure, you know, I'm actually, I grew up in Whitingham, Vermont, and just came back from Boston, being there for about seventeen years. Go soft. Playing tonight?
No, not tonight, tomorrow.
But anyway, I, I, so I, I grew up in, in Whitingham, Vermont, and so I know what it's like to be a graduate and not have had a ton of exposure to anything other than what's right in front of you, you know, my parents worked for the post office, so I was like, well, I guess that could be a job, or maybe I could be a teacher, because I know teachers, right? So I think that, that part of it is just helping them realize what a big world we have out there and what opportunities are available right here in Southern Vermont, and there are tons of growing career clusters, um, and figuring out, you know, what, what they really love and what they wanna do, what they're passionate about, and connecting them to those jobs, so, because there's all sorts of pathways to have a great future and it doesn't necessarily have to be a four-year college that saddles you with debt. It can be, and I, and I, you know, I'm certainly pro-college, but I also think that, you know, there are plenty of people I know in my family who weren't interested in that and wanted to work with their hands and get to work, so. So, I, yeah, I'm really passionate about it, so I, I agree with you, I'd love to know more about your community and, and connect people to the jobs that are available.
Yep.
Lastly, we'll end with Bobby Kilburn.
Again, my name is Bobby Kilburn, just full disclosure, I'm a town of Westminster resident, born and raised here. I'm also one of your Wyndham Regional Commission Commissioners, so you're gonna see more of me, um, in the next, oh, probably a few months or so. Um, the work that I do really supports all of what BDCC and SEVITS does on a daily basis. You know, we focus on growth, attraction, retention of businesses, support for startups and entrepreneurs, workforce and training recruitment, um, and strategic planning and project expertise. In all of these cases, I really get to focus on the dollars and the data, making sure that I can spread the word appropriately as to the impact that we have on the region. Um, this has allowed us to build our internal capacity, really partnering with municipalities like the town of Westminster, your contribution comes into BDCC and SEVITS, and taking that capacity with the partnerships and leveraging the money that we get from the state, we get about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, um, a year from the state, combining that with our grant income, which is about four million dollars, and we've been able to leverage that for a total impact in fiscal year eighteen of about forty-eight million dollars. Um, that impact is not only monetary. Um, you heard from Kristy, we have student connections, school and education connections, direct assistance to employers and entrepreneurs, and job creation. Um, that hits home here locally. Um, for example, we've assisted GS Precision, of which my husband and my son are both employed, as well as two folks right down the road from me are employed there as well, with the expansion in their building and equipment, as well as Chroma Technology, um, a Paul Millman success story, as we all know. Um, they've added not only building and equipment capacity, but over a hundred and fifteen jobs since both of those projects have started. Um, so a direct impact both locally and, and the region as a whole. Um, and then we also are a real estate owner and have many tenants at the cotton mill and the book press. We track their employment and, uh, year over year, from seventeen to eighteen, they've added about twenty-five new positions. Um, the support doesn't stop there. Um, I'm also working with Chris Hackett as the Bellas Falls Area Development Corporation President in the Robertson Paper Mill Project, um, definitely a project that's gonna assist the town of Rockingham and the local region. Um, so we are here as BDCC and SEVITS as an organization, um, we're here to help, um, and personally, I would be happy to hear how we can help and what we can do to offer more to the town and the region as a whole.
No questions?
That was the, the best, um...
Presentation.
Presentation we've had.
We're trying to get better at talking. I mean, Kristen gets the credit for really evolving our ability to tell you what you need to know, so.
So, I do have questions. So Kristy, you said you've been to, um, job fairs outside of the region?
Yeah.
Do you, what kind of idea do you get that people think about our area?
Yeah, so it's really funny, I actually shared this in a meeting today, um, but with this new marketing program, one of the kind of marketing materials that I bought is a retractable banner that hangs up typically behind me or in front of my booth, and it says, beautiful picture, somewhat similar to this, and it says, "Picture yourself in Southern Vermont." And I can't tell you how much that has been a phenomenal response. I would say I, I've only been to two, you know, we're just running this, it's a kind of a trial period, but I've only been to two outside events, so Springfield and Albany, uh, specifically job fairs, and I've talked to probably over a hundred and fifteen people at both of those combined, and I would say around ninety to ninety-five percent also, "I can picture myself in Southern Vermont, tell me more, what is this, tell me about this," or, "I grew up skiing now," or, "I love Southern Vermont, tell me more." And so it's kind of that starting conversation that says, "Yeah, I can picture myself there." So that has been, um, really interesting to see and, and exciting to see, because we all live here and we all know how great it is, but to go outside of our region and to share that, the jobs opportunities and the quality of life has been really great.
So they can picture themselves there because it's a beautiful place?
Yeah.
I mean, do they know anything else about it? No, they, they don't?
Yeah, so we're kind of building that, so we bring, we have other, sort of the setup, if you want, if you want some, sort of the setup. So, yeah, this is, this pull-up, and it sort of draws people in, and then really we have an iPad that has the portal to the Silvermont website, which has, you know, features sectors, it talks about some of the employment sectors and, and it's featuring some specific employers, and it, you know, really selected mostly because we work with them in some programs and we ask them to help fund it. And we'll be expanding, you know, anybody wants to be on it. Um, it's, the point is to get people to see that beautiful place in which they have a career, you know, possibility, and to give people sort of a broad overview, because, um, a, a lot of times we're just looking at people who maybe don't have a real clear career pathway, so they maybe are looking, "Do I wanna go in the healthcare sector, do I wanna be in like logistics, you know, do I wanna be in, you know, education?" Um, or it's also a tool for folks who have a, a household decision to make about, you know, relocating to the area and that there's someone who's getting a job offer, but their partner's like, "Hmm, what's there for me?" We wanna give them a sense of what the opportunities are here and to overcome very quickly, like, the assumption that there won't be jobs here, you know, 'cause there just are in every sector. So, so the website is really helpful, it's a beginning, like it's going to have to continue to evolve and kind of deepen, um, but we're, one of the things we have on there is just, you know, a, a job, a job seekers thing that just takes people to, you know, people around here use Indeed, and that is not true across the whole country, so we wanna make sure people go to that. And it takes people to also sort of the, the reformer, um, you know, job listings and VBSR, because we want people to know right away how to use what people use here to present jobs. Um, we're not trying to replicate and have like a bespoke job board that's like a, kind of a whole other job in itself and hard to do well, um, we're just trying to help people navigate this really quickly. So that is part of it, that's why this took us several months to stand up, 'cause we needed to have something to show the right way to prove, you know, "Picture yourself here includes jobs."
Right, so when you were there, you were giving out information, you don't give out the contacts for, if somebody says, "Well, what kind of a job?", you, do you have information on jobs in Wyndham County for them right there?
Yes, yes, uh, for the most part, yeah. So I've been using Indeed to print off some of the job applications that we have, and again, I've only been to two of them, so it's kind of been a trial, but, well, what are they looking for when they come to the team, or what are they asking for? So it's a little bit more of, you know, directing them to career pages, directing them to our Southern Vermont career page, as well as, you know, having more, um, depending on the region and the area that I'm traveling to, uh, specific job descriptions.
And, and some of it's depending upon what we know already, you know, what we know is the players that we have worked with and that we, that are larger, you know, some are in Springfield and, you know, some are, you know, like CDL, you know, we're like, "Great, so we know you." You know, and we know CNS, we know some of the companies that are looking for those people, and that's going to have to get deeper and more methodical, and that's sort of the process we're in too, but at least for now. If we can get people looking at a couple of good opportunities up here and considering the region, then they'll look further and, and see more, so.
Yeah, and I was always trying to figure out how we can reach out. As a parent, and you put your children to school and then they have to move away to get a job, and, and then now we're at the age where we're gonna get done working, is don't give up on those people, because those people that live in Westminster, if they knew there was, there was a good job and they're contacting their children, 'cause hey, if you wanna move back, there's a good job in this area. Sometimes even though they're not looking for a job, they're the best recruiters.
Sometimes I kind of say, like, we were doing this whole Silvermont campaign, I'm like, a lot of it's to tell ourselves, you know what I mean, it's like, this is, because there is this problem of, you know, people got in their minds that there were no jobs or that, that kids had to leave to be successful, so we're trying to tell the world, but we're also kind of trying to tell ourselves, you know, to get that, that story out so that everyone has, you know, carries that message and feels it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Everybody from the crowd? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next up, Greater Falls Connections.
Can we stay here or?
You can stay right there if you'd like. It's a small room.
Some of us will stay.
Patrick, we've done the same, that, uh, slight presentation.
I feel like I wanna recognize our cameraman, who is at our, uh, presentation to the Grafton Select Board this summer. You can give us some pointers on how we're doing.
Turn the camera around, take a look.
Um, so, uh, my name is Laura Sherbaum, I'm the Director of Greater Falls Connections, and I believe I spoke, um, to the board in a similar fashion a few years ago, um, about our work around prescription drug abuse prevention. And, uh, so, you, you may be familiar with what we do, but I was gonna give a brief overview of what we, what we've been up to and what areas that, uh, in the community that we work in. Um, and I also just remembered, I have some materials for you to look at, um, with information about, um, some of our outreach and education that we've done in the community. And I have an extra one for the other staff member.
Thank you.
And for you.
Thank you.
Um, so we are your community coalition that works to prevent, um, substance abuse and reduce the impacts of the disease of addiction in the community. So we, um, provide a lot of education in the schools, as well as provide some opportunities for youth to take on leadership roles in our, in, in implementing some of our campaigns. Oh, we also have some extra brochures for audience members. Hand those out, Scott. Um, so the, um, the sheet in your packet just is an overview of what we do. We, we aren't just working in the schools with kids, we're actually looking at the whole community, and we're looking at how to support families and talking to their kids about substance use. We sponsored a, uh, National Family Day, which is a day to encourage parents to eat dinner with their kids and how to have conversations so they can connect over the dinner table. Um, we also have a, a Bubly Influence Group, which is a, a group of youth, many who are at risk for substance use, um, who really are, um, have, have big dreams for their community and are working to help us spread the word about, um, about the importance of being drug-free and also about what they would like for their community. Uh, last Tuesday, we had an event at the Rockingham Free Public Library that posed the question, "Can we wrest our way out of the opioid problem?" A provocative title that was really meant to provoke some thought about how we as a community can come together to address the opioid crisis and really think about how we can be a community and welcoming to folks who may be struggling with addiction. So we worked with the, um, Greater Falls Restorative Justice Center and the Friends for Change Youth Club, and the youth actually led restorative justice circles that, um, brought people together to talk about what it is they want in their community and, and how, um, substances have affected them. And so what we really try to do is have important conversations about the disease of addiction and how, um, we can support youth in making good decisions so that they're not on that path, but also how we create a community that's welcoming and, and healthy for folks who are struggling with addiction. Um, so we also, and, and one of the main, um, presentations we wanted to introduce you today is we also do work with towns around planning and policies that can promote health, excuse me, promote health and prevent subs- future substance use. So we'll be talking about a resource that we have created with the Wyndham, um, Regional Commission that we could, um, go into further depth, uh, with you or your planning commission as you're thinking about town planning. Um, so the other materials in your packets, um, are just some examples of some campaigns that we've done. We worked with the Bellas Falls Union High School to help get out messages to parents about how they're really important, um, in influencing their kids and their decision-making. So you'll see our, I Will Be a Parent, Not a BFF, uh, campaign materials there, and we also, um, we, we promote a campaign called Parent Up, which is a website that the Department of Health has created to provide resources and tips for parents on how to deal with, um, with kids as they transition into, into the teenage years, which can be, uh, as, as probably you know, can be a challenging time in the life of a family. So we do a lot of that outreach, um, and I wanted to move on to, um, the resource that we have for town planning. So, um, we have created with the Wyndham Regional Commission this Planning for Prevention Guide, which Scott is gonna talk about, um, in a few minutes, um, but we also wanted to emphasize that we're creating also some resources for towns and planning around health equity. And health equity is basically the idea that, um, where people live and people's access to services and resources can actually influence their health and their potential, um, future substance use. So, uh, where someone lives really determines a lot, things like access to economic resources and their economic status, environmental factors like exposure to lead, um, which also factors into town planning, access to jobs as, um, SEVITS were here, um, talking about, as well as their, as people's social connections in the community. So as far as what that means for town planning is that, um, when you look at, um, health, actually, housing, transportation, and access to recreational resources can influence, um, health outcomes. Um, so we're developing some resources around that and, and would be, um, happy to work with you on how to, how to think about that in terms of your town planning and, and the social aspects of health. And I'll turn it over to Scott.
My name is Scott Charlin, I'm the Program Specialist at Greater Falls Connections. Laura just mentioned this resource, which I'll hand out right now. Called it the Primer on Planning for Prevention, and as she mentioned, it was developed with the, uh, Regional Planning Commission along with the Wyndham Prevention Partnership. And this is a resource, and we have a PowerPoint that goes along with this, but it provides examples of ordinances, of town plan language, a variety of things geared around preventing alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, um, the abuse of other drugs amongst youth especially. So, the PowerPoint probably takes about a half an hour and it really walks you through step by step how to use this document and, um, where it may be useful within a town. It's really looking at visioning for, you know, what you wanna see and how you can prevent a substance abuse problem in your community before it happens, um, or if there already is one, you know, trying to mitigate those issues. is one, you know, trying to mitigate those issues.
So, if there's a future meeting, or if we can make connections with your planning commission, we'd be happy to go through the presentation that we have for that. And I apologize for not getting this to you sooner, it's a really great resource as far as thinking about what your local community looks like, and how you can think about what you envision for your community, and to incorporate health and wellness into that plan as well. We also wanted to share about some work that we're doing in Westminster, and how folks can get involved in preventing substance use. So, we also do work in creating awareness around prescription drug abuse, and I'm really happy to share that the Vermont Department of Health has a new program for folks who may not be able to reach the prescription, prescription drug drop boxes, is there's actually a mail-back program. So, I have some here, if folks wanted to take them. We also have done outreach to Westminster Cares, and presentations around prescription drug awareness, and the importance of keeping, keeping medications locked up in medicine cabinets, and also getting rid of unused or expired medications. And we also, I'm not sure you're aware, but all of the state police barracks now have drop boxes, so the Westminster Barracks has a drop box now, and they're, I believe their hours are eight to four, so anytime their lobby is open, they've been a great support in helping get rid of prescription drugs in the community. And also, close to here, the Bellas Falls Police Department, as well as the Greater Falls Pharmacy, has a prescription drug drop box, so just in case you weren't aware. We also sponsor twice a year a prescription drug take-back program, and that is gonna be this coming Saturday, from ten to twelve, the Bellas Falls Police Department and many other law enforcement locations will be open to get, let people get rid of their prescription drugs. So, if you're doing fall cleaning, I guess people do that maybe, they can think about getting rid of their prescriptions, and that's also in your packet, and we also do one in the spring. So, just to get the word out that it's really important to get rid of medications. We also, as I mentioned, do work with the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union, so the students that are in that system are getting a lot, the families are getting a lot of information about substance use, and how to have important conversations with kids, and we also, from time to time, have presenters and speakers in the schools, and we work closely with the guidance and student assistance professional to ensure that kids who may be struggling are getting the resources they need in order to cope with anxiety, or mental health issues, or substance use issues that might incur from that. So, we do, we do partner with Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union, as well as other work we do, a lot of other work that we do with the business community. And Scott's gonna talk a little bit about the community-based work that we do, and signage, and.
No, I have just, so this is funding via the Department of Health?
We get our funding through a federal drug-free communities grant, that's what half we're funding, and then we get funding through the Department of Health. Yep.
So, I just wanted to mention, in addition to what we've done with Wyndham Northeast, specifically with Compass School here in Westminster, we've facilitated parent dialogue nights, we'll be doing one next week, actually, on marijuana. We've done ones in the past on texting, and use of digital media, variety of topics to support parents. We've done staff training there, we've done assessments to see whether or not they had any issues, and you know, what were their strengths and weaknesses around substance abuse prevention, and we've also taught classes on alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs for the students there. We've also provided smoke-free zone signage, which you'll see examples of the signs on the primer, right there, with the smoke-free events. So, we've done the smoke-free signage at the Park and Ride, right across the street here, and the Center School, amongst a number of other locations, so places that want to have outdoor, smoke-free areas, we support that. And we've also done assessments of retailers, and we've worked with retailers in a variety of ways over the years, and one thing we've done, we usually do it about every four years, we go to Circle K, Allen Brothers, Harlow's Farm Stand, any retailer that sells alcohol or tobacco, and we look for a variety of things, but just see what sort of products they're selling, whether or not there's advertising that may be attractive to youth, or products that are attractive to youth. And one thing we instituted this year was called the Star Stores Program, where we give a rating to stores based on whether or not they sell alcohol or tobacco, and what sort of advertising they have. And stores receive a gold star if they choose to not sell alcohol or tobacco, they receive a silver star if they do not advertise alcohol or tobacco, and they receive a bronze star if they do not advertise outside, outdoors, so there's no ease of viewing the advertising for alcohol or tobacco, you know, when a child is walking by, or in a car passing by. I wanted to mention and give a recognition to Harlow's Farm Stand, they received a gold star for not selling tobacco, and a silver star for not having any advertising for alcohol, and Circle K received a bronze star for not advertising alcohol outdoors, and Allen Brothers received a bronze star for not advertising tobacco outdoors. So, just wanted to recognize the work that the retailers are doing. We also connect them to the Department of Liquor Control when they do have the trainings in the area, so often they're in Brattleboro, but occasionally we've had them in Springfield and nearby. So, we, you know, try to give advance notice to all the retailers, to send their staff, to make sure they're trained, so they're not, you know, selling to minors, whether it be alcohol or tobacco. Yeah, that's some of our partnerships around retailers.
I'll also mention that the Wyndham County has gotten a federal grant through a health, rural health grant, I can't tell you what the acronym stands for. It's a federal grant, it's a planning grant for one year, two hundred thousand dollars, for the Wyndham County Consortium on Substance Use, which is a collaboration between prevention organizations, treatment organizations, as well as the Turning Point Recovery Centers down in Brattleboro, the Brattleboro Retreat, Brattleboro Memorial Hospital, Grace Cottage, so a swath of partners who are working, who are gonna be doing some assessments around, around access and services for prevention, harm reduction, which is like the Narcan, the drug overdose reversal drug, and treatment access for opioid, for opioid treatment, and also recovery. So, recovery is sort of what happens after treatment, is how you integrate and reintegrate into the community. So, we're a partner on that, and as a coalition representing Bellas Falls, we are at that table, and out of that, they're gonna be talking about workforce development, and the, you know, healthcare needs for, for treatment providers and recovery providers. So, I thought it was really important to highlight that Wyndham County got that grant, and there's another consortium in northern Vermont that got that, but it was a pretty highly competitive grant, and we had a seller application. And so, after one year, we're gonna have a strategic plan to address access to opioid use disorder services, and so there'll be more coming out in terms of that, of what we're gonna do about it, you know, what we're gonna do about this crisis in Wyndham County. So, I'm really proud of that, and our, and our contribution to that. I also did want to mention, because when I was talking to Russ, when we were setting this up, that we are going to be doing a budget request for this year's town meeting for the town of Westminster. We got an allocation from Rockingham last year, so we're gonna be looking for Westminster, and if you have any questions about that, I'm more than happy to answer them. And we also wanted to just hear from you about what concerns you might have, and how we might connect more with the leadership in your community, because we really are based in Bellas Falls, and we're reaching all of the communities that are within the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union, and we're here, you know, just in these communities, so we want to provide resources to you as we are able.
How does legalization of marijuana in the state of Vermont affect you guys?
Interesting question. We provide education, and I think it's really important that, that communities and adults are especially learning more about the impacts that marijuana may have on youth, regardless, you know, we, we're in a political organization, so we don't, you know, we don't advocate either way, but certainly increasing markets for marijuana will increase the amount of marijuana, and so we have, you know, so, so we have concerns that youth will have more access to that. And we particularly think about kids who may be using to self-medicate for anxiety or mental health issues that may be undiagnosed. So, we're, we try to look at it as, what is the overall health of a child, and how can we support them, so that they're finding other ways and resources to deal with whatever, whatever may be going on in their lives, mental health, or trauma. So, we all need to be more educated about that, you know, personally, I don't care if you're an adult, if you use marijuana, but we need to be, we need to be having conversations about how it will affect our youth.
And we've also tried to raise awareness around impaired driving, and the fact that that might increase based on the changes to the law.
So, I guess we would ask if you, first of all, you had any other questions, but we would love to connect with the planning commission, or with you, to have more conversations about planning. I understand that you're in the process of updating, or some updates to your town plan?
It's interesting, we never even asked the school board to, you know, because I, we, when you think of planning, you just don't think of this, but you would think that the school board, we should have some input into it also, if they're the ones that connected with the children. I don't think we've ever invited the school board to be involved with a planning.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other communications or public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll go on to unfinished business.
New dog ordinance.
It's gonna be old before we end it.
The red is the newest changes, the green was the first, the changes of this October's document. Susan and Janine have gone through this, and added these changes. Upon discussing this with Susan, we did send it to legal counsel at that point of these changes, so he has it in his mix at this time.
So, maybe let me know when it comes back, and I told him that I would take another look at it after Larry gets done with it. Have any chances of looking at it?
So, even right now, you don't need a motion for us to send it to legal counsel? Because the way we left.
We just did it, and this was, this was the last.
I have no problem.
So, it's gonna go to the counsel.
At his hands, you'll look at it, give us some recommendations.
If we still, when it's still going back, we didn't want to go to the public, elect the public.
Absolutely.
To be involved with whether they like it or not.
Yep.
Thank you for your work, Susan. Now, let's move on. Property sales, up next, property?
I don't have any update at this point, I thought I was going to, so I put, left it in there, but there was nothing at this time.
Mandich, New Hampshire lawsuit update. I did talk to you about, I did give you the.
Yes, and I gave him that information, that Mr. Mandich seems to have found a new place of residency in a different state, and they're seeking him where he's at. They had also heard about that, which, so, he's not just going to.
So, it's another state other than New Hampshire or Vermont?
That's correct.
Correct.
Is the, are the people who bought the slaughterhouses, is he looking now? Is there a business doing that?
Not that I know of. He was supposed to submit a building plan, a, not building plan, but a business plan to the zoning portion of it, to see if it complies to what he has for permits, so I haven't seen it yet.
What sort of a business is he thinking about?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't.
The guy that bought it is, is in the slaughterhouse.
The equipment must all be still in there, etc. The equipment must.
It is.
Some of it.
Some of it, yeah.
It did look like he cleaned it up, the place, as of the other day.
They haven't been cleaning it, they haven't been holding into anything. The last time I was there.
There's no pages around it. It's a good thing. Search for treasure or update.
I'm gonna ask that this goes into executive session, the deadline was at four o'clock today, since the meeting got moved, kind of changed a little bit, so if the board so pleases, I would like to bring that article into executive session to talk about the folks that have applied. It should be common knowledge at that point. It might hurt their employment where they are.
We need a motion on that, don't we?
I do.
All right, moved up, we go to the executive session, discuss the search for the treasures, and look at their applications.
Second?
Motion's been moved, and second, it's going to executive session, um.
After.
The article, the treasurer.
We're not going into executive session right now.
No.
Well, I mean, I think.
Never have.
Well.
Amen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we will go into executive session after other business.
Very fine.
Hearst Building, budget or article?
In your packet, we were playing around with some ideas, you have pictures in your packet of what it could be, it needs to be historic, it needs to be a little more than just a square building, so again, these are, nothing set in stone, but these were some ideas that we had, just to get your minds thinking about it. But we all, we know that there's an estimate out there, a range of sixteen to eighteen thousand, with the town tearing down the old building.
This is in Westminster, Wes?
That's correct, and we really have a commitment to get the Hearst out of the top floor, the museum, so it should be started in the spring, completed in the summer, and move the Hearst so that the historic society can continue their, their business, their viewings. So, we have a budget problem, whether you're going to insert it into the present budget that we're deciding on, on Y-20, or are you going to put it in front of the taxpayers or as an article at town meeting? So, that's a decision you folks are gonna have to come up with.
Well, we came up with a place for it, but she doesn't like the place for it, I take it.
She, you weren't here, she, she has, Ruth Grandy requested that the Hearst be moved once, instead of a couple moves, she felt better that it would be taken apart, moved into its new home, and put back together again, instead of the interim storage. That being said, they still hope to be active next summer, so.
How much of a problem is it now, for space? The problem is it's too. For space, the problem is it's too crowded up there, right?
That, that's correct. And this, this is very large, um, very large. We have talked, they, they didn't seem too, um, happy about it. We could literally wheel it into the meeting space while they were doing their, their business. And again, when we had a meeting, I could wheel it out into their space, but they're, they have, um, ideas of how they're gonna set up everything and it doesn't work into the plan. So, um, it would, they would rather it gone by summer, so.
Um, this eighteen thousand dollars then, how did, how did you arrive as that figure?
I had a contractor give me an estimate. It was a range. And I haven't put it out to bid because we don't know what we're doing yet.
So a contractor, on, on what basis did he get to the eighteen thousand?
I told him some sizes of the Hearsts and told him that two sides needed to be glassed, one needed to be a garage door, and he went from there.
I think it should go for the town, is what I think.
Definitely it's gotta be an article, I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
Not gonna do this as part of the budget. Um, we've come up with a, as I said, we came up with a place for it. We can put it back together where we offered it, and it can be left together at that point 'cause we've got double doors in the community house, so take it in and take it out.
Voters pass it down, then yes, absolutely. I, I see that as being a, a very good, um, alternative, but, um, she's hoping that a permanent home will be, will be granted, so, um-
I, I, I'm, well, it's probably, yeah, not something to discuss, but you seem to be fixed on these two gl- glass walls.
Yeah, I mean, what, what good is it if you're gonna put it into a closed barn where nobody's gonna see it? You gotta have some windows so that the people can view it, or it's useless.
Unless it gets put into a, in a different place, that's part of another. I mean, I think there's a lot of other choices, we gotta have some more discussion about it, and how did we, and all of a sudden, you inherited it? But is there another museum someplace that could be incorporated in, I don't, so, I think there's, we got a ways to go, yeah.
I agree. I agree.
And then let the voters decide when they, which way they wanna go with.
Somebody want to say something?
What about Shelburne Museum, would they take it and, uh?
It's, it's a possibility, I, actually, somebody else. Somebody else, and I, I talked to Tembridge Fair about it, um, when I was up there this year, they, they already have a Hearst, so they weren't really interested in it, but, Shelburne Museum actually does move stuff in and move stuff out along those lines. If they had a Hearst from, let's say, one town, I guess they will move it out and move something else in, 'cause they always just changing their display, so that is another possibility.
So to make it official, we probably should have a motion in a, in a, um, to put it as an article.
I'm not sure I would want it as an article till we do a little more research, that's my, I don't want it in the budget personally, and I don't want it even come to an article till we do a little more research, is, is there other choices that somebody would take it and put it in a museum or something on it?
So you're willing to give it away?
I think we gotta have that discussion, I, I don't know, all of a sudden, you, somebody that said, we, it's ours, but what is ours, you know?
It is the town's.
Right, so-
It was granted to the town.
And I don't think, it's like, well, I have the permit, the authority to just give it away, but I have the authority to go to the voters, and one would be not just the building, but maybe you feel comfortable of us donating it to the Shelburne Museum, that's all.
With our name on it?
Yeah.
With our name on it, okay. So you want me to call Shelburne Museum?
I don't know if I wanna do that, I just don't wanna make a motion tonight that we make it as an article.
Why don't you call them and get the information?
Well, either way, it's gonna be an article. If you're not gonna put it in the budget, you gotta, you gotta throw it in front of the taxpayers and let them decide and have options by town meeting, that this is what one option is, is to give it to the, to the Shelburne Museum.
I was ready to give you the details of how the article would read, I guess that was my point, you're looking, you know, 'cause the article read that, do they wanna give it away in permission, or do they wanna put a building up? I don't know, help them at that, 'cause are we at that point, or are we just, you're just looking for a verbiage to say, go ahead and include that?
I just don't want, want you get, um, to the point of the budget and, and not have that money in there if you wanted it in there. So that was what, that-
Right.
Line item was for tonight, article or budget? 'Cause we, we didn't, we weren't clear last meeting, so.
I would say definitely article, as far as I'm concerned.
So then we'll, we'll explore more, um, options within the article.
Right, we don't have to have the wording.
We don't, surely don't have to have it tonight.
We've got, we've got a place for it regardless, so, I'm not-
Right, we have a place for it.
But again, I would really kinda like a, a motion to say it's gonna be an article with choices, the choices still-
I think the other people not understand what you're saying, you actually want a motion tonight to make it an article.
To make it an article, put it on in front of the taxpayers.
I don't know.
Every article you guys have to, to vote on it.
Well, I'm not su-
The wording, you don't need it now.
No, I know, I just don't know why you need that answer tonight, but that's, if we make a motion to put it in an article, we change-
Let's put it off till the next meeting.
Just put it off then.
We'll see you then.
We'll speak of that. Would you put something, is, is that about it?
It's, that's what I'm saying, we just need a little time.
Or looking for, you know, maybe somebody else that's got a building, they donate to put it in.
Yeah. Like the piano, is the piano gone?
Yeah. Take one, you take one.
Right.
Two for-
The piano, well, in the Historic Society, there's a piano.
Go back away with the CD.
Put the piano in the Hearst.
Financials as of ten nineteen.
I, I brought it, brought this back to you, um, because Sheldon had some questions about, um, some of the line items, and he got that from Susan?
Got what?
Some que- more questions about line items?
Yes.
On the, um, we're still talking about the, uh, October nineteenth. I, I didn't update it on you, I just tri- been trying to keep it, just looking at the little date at the, um, looked at popcorn.
Right, okay, yes, yes. I can't remember a single thing, but I know, I did ask about the office supplies. Did you answer that?
I did, yep.
I don't remember what the answer is, right.
It's the transfer of the tax envelopes from the treasurer to, to the, um-
Yeah.
Executive.
Right, okay.
The second draft, this is what we, you got ten ten on top and the bottom, you got ten twenty-four. Is ten ten-
We're not there yet.
No, this is ten nineteen.
I'm sorry, that could be just, uh, something that I didn't, um, plug in. We're still on the financials.
He's not, he's, yeah.
This is the present day budget to date, financials. I can go through the line items that appear to be, um, of consequence again, um-
And keep in mind, you had as many questions about this as-
I sure did, and we got the answers to them, so, um, I gave them to you last meeting, but if we wanna go through them again, I can surely go through them, I got them marked in red. Could help you out.
People that were here tonight said they were gonna ask for some money, have we had any, any other activity groups that were, that might come back and ask for either more, or, uh, a new group?
These are the only two that I know are going to petition for, for monies. I, I don't do that, it's the clerks, so.
Yeah, no, you'd get-
Scott, yeah, Scott, it's, it's just these two.
So, not being here at the last meeting, Wes, the, um, the question two meetings ago was that we had an awful lot of departments that were, um, had a chance to look at this close enough to, we had a lot of departments that we were way over our budget already, and we were only three to four months, three months into the year, where we already spent a hundred percent of the budget, so, is that-
That has been-
Has that been answered, corrected, you guys did at the last meeting, you went through it?
The only one that still is, is showing, uh, an overture is the treasurer's, uh, office. And it will only show, and it will only show, uh, more, uh, of a deficit as the time goes by, because now we've hired NEMRIC to help us do that. So, um, in the interim of finding a treasurer, so.
And what do they get paid out of? Where does the money for them come from?
NEMRIC will be paid out of the, um, the contracted service under, um, town manager. So it is, um, on page three, under salaries and wages of, one, two, three, four, five, sixth line down contracted services. Because of, the treasurer has no line item for a contracted service. And that's where worry is, um, once you reconcile your books.
Yeah.
Once you hire a treasurer, will NEMRIC continue to do the cash management portion?
That's later in the meeting under job description, um, that discussion has to happen to what the scope of, of, um, worth is going to be.
It will depend upon, uh, what we get from the treasurer?
It might. Um, it, right now, um, you have in-house, um, the ability to, to handle, uh, a larger portion of that, that financial, um, officer's position, um, to Kelly.
Is this because of, of Kelly?
Uh-huh. So, um, that, that would be up to you, and, and it's in later in the meeting, but you can talk about it when you want.
Well, you know, if this is, anybody can run, the way we have it now, we do not hire a treasurer.
You appoint right now.
You appoint now, but the, um, anybody who runs, I mean, this is a, um, job description, but any, it doesn't mean that somebody can't, you know, get elected and not know anything about this. That's, you know, I think as a town-
To, to say that this is just the short term-
Right.
From now until someone's elected. How are we going to manage the financial end of our-
Yeah.
Office? Again.
All right, let's, let's bring it up later, one more.
Well, it's gonna matter how much we put in that, that-
In the budget.
Budget, yeah.
So you're tabling and where?
No, we're just gonna move, we're just gonna move on from financials.
You're gonna put that down in the minutes, right?
No.
You had a moment?
If it's coming up, if we're gonna talk about it again, we'll talk about it later. Physically, your twenty budget review and expenditures.
Okay, so, in your packet, there's more information that has been settled upon. One large one that just came in today is the, um, police. I'm trying to find it, just a second, it's right there, on page five. His new rate is going from seventy thousand to eighty-one thousand three hundred, which is going to be by the hour. The town can opt to do the two thousand hours as, as we have now, or you can, um, opt to go less, but the rate turns to fifty-one dollars an hour. So just for the sake of talking, I did a little bit of math, um, a thousand hours would be fifty-one thousand, fifteen hundred hours would be seventy, seventy-six thousand five hundred.
Did we get two thousand hours this year, or last year? Are we on track for getting, is that how many we contract for this year?
That's correct.
And?
It, it states forty hours a week, and then it states that, that's a maximum two thou- uh, a minimum of two thousand hours. So, um, are we getting it? It's, it's happening, um, will we be there at the end of the year? I don't know, um, it's, it's tough to tell. Right now, they're, um, shorthanded and they're working like, three officers in one day are putting in like eighteen hours, and then we won't see them again for two or three days. It got to the point where it was so sporadic, I started a chart, and I've been monitoring when they come. We're averaging like three days of actual presence, um, with four days off right now. Will it change, um, later? I don't know.
But it's not by the hour now, but it is by the hour.
Yes, that's-
I mean, we pay them by the hour.
No, we're in a contract of seventy grand, but it, in the contract is two thousand hours at a minimum.
Right, so if they don't make the two thousand hours, then-
Then we have a, a complaint.
But, but on the new system, if they, they're gonna do by the hour up to two thousand, if they go twenty-one hundred hours, we're paying even more. Whereas on this old system, it's capped at seventy thousand.
That's correct, and-
But they're going to, they're going to cap you at, at that two thousand hours, they're gonna make sure that you are at two thousand hours period.
Only question is, if they're coming up to eleventh hour and all of a sudden they realize something really bad happened to Westminster, I'm sure, and I, well, you wouldn't think, I would say you'd ask him to come in and speak to us. He needs to address it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm also-
Where are we?
You know, we got into, to, our involvement in having a regular police presence in the town started when we were sharing this with Pupney. And it was significantly less, it was half the, I think we were gonna, forty hours was split. Now we're talking about, um, a lot more, and the question is, what are our needs? And I think that's where we ought to start from, not what the sheriff's needs are, but what our needs are. And we ought to really examine this because, um, I'm not so sure that we aren't overstepping what are, is necessary in the town.
And how will we determine that? What are the factors?
Well, I don't know, we need to, we need to talk about it. I mean, what we are doing basically now, I think essentially it has to do with speeding cars and, um, so on and so forth. I think that's what we have is traffic.
Most of it's traffic, but there is, of course, we have twelve arrests already this year.
For?
A variety of things. But yes, most of it is traffic, no question about it.
Where, where are we sitting? I mean, let's, let's back up here when we were at fifty thousand dollars and we were talking about basically, um, the revenue that we basically got as a town that was funding the Sheriff's Department, or funding a good percentage of what our contract was. So where are we sitting right now for tickets that have been issued? Are we, is that like a lost cause at this point in time, where it, it's not working out? I mean, two years ago, it worked out great. Well, this last two years, not so great, as far as I can see.
That's correct, and the court, without any notification, is now keeping more of the revenue for their needs and their budgets. So the town- revenue for their needs and their budgets. So the town is now expected to receive up 20 to 22% of the revenue from a ticket issued in Westminster. So off the top of my head, it's roughly, I think it was like-
17,000 was what we were one time, your guess of it.
Yeah, that was last year's, but this year, I think the total, total tickets written are something like 16,000. You do the math, you're expected to get about 8,500. Well, now you're getting about 4,200 of revenue from that amount of tickets issued. Most of it is going into the courts.
So that's what happened when you-
So our offset revenue was way down.
Right. So when we asked about the 22%, that was the answer that you got?
That's correct. Most towns are now seeing the 20, 20 to 22%.
Does the court decide that?
I guess so.
Do we get it from-
Chief Clark didn't know about it.
Do we, do we get it from the state police office or not? Just-
No, we don't.
Can you, I think we need to have him come in.
I'm going to go ahead and ask him to speak to the board.
So we're paying, we're calling our people over in town, taking them for their budget.
That's correct.
And it does nothing for us.
Yeah, and they're going to whack us another $11,000 this year.
So why do we have one?
If we deal with it, so.
And the state police is right here.
The argument was that the sheriffs monitor where the state police doesn't. They were supposed to drive around and check that nobody's breaking into Allen Brothers or the pool or whatever. I mean, that was what the object was.
Who was? The state police or the sheriff's department?
Sheriff. The state police don't patrol anywhere.
Well, I noticed that. Yeah, I could go along with that one. I shouldn't say anything because we're in their building.
Last Saturday night before state office, I lined up with their lights on. They were going somewhere.
Domestic disturbance somewhere probably.
Yep. So another, another line item that is linked to your court is we need to figure out what we're going to do with the Northwest Community House's roof. I had a conversation with Craig about other needs, but we have been told that we're, our roof is leaking and it's obvious that we are losing valuable integrity in the building.
It's back leaking again?
I'm sorry?
It was back leaking again.
I thought Stetson said it wasn't leaking yet.
It was leaking. That's what all that stating is, but it, it's typical storms.
That was ice buildup though.
Yeah. He said possibly it could have been, but wind driven rain also is, is-
I didn't know that, to be honest with you. I thought, I thought when I understand that it wasn't going to leak anymore. We had a year to do it.
I can ask him again, but I'm-
Ask him again because I thought-
He told, he told me it wasn't leaking at this point in time, that it was, that it was ice buildup in the winter time that had caused the damage.
It's a nice roof, isn't it?
No, it's an asphalt roof.
But- Just ask because that's news to me. I was, I was on the assumption that it had leaked, but it was, it wasn't going to be leaking anymore, but we still need to address putting the roof on it. And I'd like, like I said, still look at the cost if we were to put heat in there too.
And there again, do you want to do that as a miracle?
So Russ, have you gone through the spreadsheet to make sure the form notes are all accurate? Okay, so they're all good now?
We didn't listen to that.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think that would be the right way to do it.
Right now, it's the line item that we should be concerned about on the, on the, the costs.
Good maintenance.
The bottom line is of course important, but it won't be important until we get all of our needs down. So-
Right. I understand that, but we just have to make sure that the spreadsheet is accurate and the form notes because then it's kind of pointless to even discuss anything if the numbers are not correct.
I still am impressed every time I've been here on this board a long time. Of anything we ever did right was signing that contract with Golden Cross. It's just amazing how little they have increased their rate since the day we signed it.
We just signed a very new one.
I know. It's just amazing. And they really have us. I mean, they could ask, even if they asked for more, what would you do, you know? But how little they've, they've gone up since all the time we've had them. It's been, and they've been great service. It's really been the best deal we've had. I asked this last time, nothing's changed. On that health insurance benefit, that's still, you're just taking the same rate you had last year and increasing by that percentage even though we might have less people on the insurance.
That's correct. But again, we're at full-
Full staff.
Full staff now. So if you took what we actually are going to spend in FY19, it's surely not going to be accurate.
Well, we're full staff, but one of them is really not taking issue. Yeah. You know what I'm talking about?
I, I do.
Are we, are we, I know we went from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which was, Blue Cross Blue Shield was coming up.
22 and a half percent.
22 and a half percent. Are we, budget wise, are we thinking that MVP may go do the same thing next year or?
They haven't come out with their, their estimate for the second half of this coming year. And that's how you base your first part of your next year. They don't go out that far. They will not tell you what FY20 is going to look like, but they will tell us what the next half of our year is from January 1st to June 30th. And that's what we base our, our estimate on. So that hasn't come out yet. That's why it's still in red. But there has been articles that I've been reading that are saying it's going to be about an 8% increase with MVP to the municipalities with a possible 10% for the second half of next year. That's why I did change those two numbers to the newest estimate, but it's still not etched in stone. So on the revenue side, if we're ready to-
Yep, let's go.
We've got some good news today. We actually are going to get our full payment for this building that we're standing in right now. Our pilot is estimated to be, which is, which is taxes in lieu of payment.
Paying in lieu of taxes.
That's, yeah. $44,451. So we were used to about 22,000. So it's going to be, it's going to go up about 5% on the others and then, so this building will be somewhere between 18 and 20. They don't break it out for us, but it will be somewhere between 18 and $20,000 of taxes that we're going to get for this building. Current use is also going to go up to 9,400, excuse me, $94,660.
94,000?
And the whole harmless is current use.
Where, where are we?
From about 90. Halfway into your page, revenue from the state.
Oh, from the state, okay.
So both of those-
Oh, that's the whole form list.
So both of those are significantly-
What are the other pilot, four, eight, four besides state fees?
We have HCRS, we have power lines, we have, you do the utility substation. It's all of the government-
Square Mountain Tower, is that?
Yeah.
I don't know that. Again, it's a, it's a, that's a, that's a company.
Yeah, it's a company. It's, it's government building.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Was that railroad tax? I don't even remember that one, but that was just a one-time deal?
Railroad tax was, was a one-time deal and I, we still had no answer to why all of a sudden we got, whether there was work done and they were able to, to take some of the assets from the work that was done and give it back to the town. I don't know. I honestly, it was before we had a good handle on what taxes were going to be. So again, I will ask that you, you look at them, ask me questions. We'll mark them up, but as I get more information, of course, I keep updating your, so that you can, you again can follow how we're progressing as information comes into the, into the town.
Thank you, Russell. Any other unfinished business you want to deal with? Right now. Harry, then we'll go on to new business.
Unsafe building ordinance.
I've had multiple people bring this to my attention and I'm bringing it to yours. We have a magnitude of buildings now that are still on the tax roll but are in deplorable shape. Two being right in the historic village, one being on top of Hartley Hill, others spread throughout. And we have no teeth in the matter to enforce work or, or at least public safety on a building that we don't own. This is, this document came from the town of Bellows Falls, the village of Bellows Falls, and it is just a guideline. It's just an example. I think conversation needs to happen. We're losing some significant tax base from these buildings that people are whisking by and paying the taxes, but they're not doing any maintenance or, or anything.
Well, my, I'm sorry, my understanding about Bellows Falls is this is a public building that they, this is come up there because there is a slate falling off a roof and children are walking by.
That wasn't a public building, but-
Yeah, but, but it is a public danger-
Correct.
-because it's on a street where near a school and so on and so forth. We're not talking about private homes.
We're talking about children going into an open home with no doors and windows to be found with needles and drug paraphernalia in these buildings.
You mean abandoned buildings?
They're abandoned buildings. Most of these that I'm, that I know of that I've brought my attention to.
But if the taxes are paid, that would not mean there were, what does abandoned mean? No one lives there? No one's lived there for a long time?
Nobody's maintaining the property. So hence, they're wide open. They've been broke into. Copper has been stolen. Anything valuable in it has been gone through. The taxes have been paid or, I'm sorry, have the taxes been paid on? Unfortunately, at least the ones that I'm talking about, yes. So pretty much can't do nothing about it.
They can be condemned for health reasons.
Right. And that's, that's where this is all, it's just conversation, whether you guys follow it through.
Okay.
My job is to pass on the information from the public and that's what I just did.
Okay, good. We'll move on. Treasurer's position, job description.
I gave you this list back in September, but it's getting to a point where we need to make up our minds what we're going to do. Obviously, it's going to depend on who you appoint for the position, but it's getting to the point where we have to know where we're going with this. We have, we have loopholes that are not being done because we don't know whose job it is. Today, a perfect example, documents were not forwarded from NIMRAC to Kelly to the warrant and then sent. So what happened is the documents weren't attached to the checks. The checks went out. These agencies have no idea how to apply the check, such as Beamers, our health insurance, the state tax bill, and there was one more. There was four that-
Isn't that what we hired NIMRAC for though? To do the cash management part of it?
It is the treasurer's position to, to do that, but we haven't, we haven't given that to Nancy. Nancy was told she's-
Right. And that's why we hired NIMRAC to do-
But there's that gap that NIMRAC comes to this point, the, a financial person would take it to the, to the next point and then it would give Nancy the complete document. So there's a, there's a gap. And this is why I'm bringing it up again, because there's these gaps. We have to, we have to figure out what you foresee as the next steps. Are you going to ask this new person to collect taxes, be the person to send out tax bills? And then there, then you have this list of all the typical breakdown between the financial department and a treasurer. We have recommendations within the office, only because we see it every day. We handle it every day. These things are not overly complicated. They're just steps that were missed and we can't keep doing it. We got to have a system where this person that we bring into the position says, oh, I do this. And then it's passed over to this person, this person does that, and then it's mailed out. So there's no gray area to who's doing what to where. Again, we've gone through what we feel is, is a very workable scenario, but you guys have got to get on board with this. We can't do it, you know, without your permission.
Okay, let's talk about, we're going to bring, where you're doing this treasurer's position in executive session anyway.
Yes.
And by the way, I would like to invite Nancy.
It will come to light into that.
Into that.
Well, we're, we, excuse me, but I, we're talking, we're having a, a executive session to talk about-
Individuals that you might appoint.
Yes, okay. We're not going into executive session to discuss the, the job.
But as we just said, who you appoint possibly could tell you that that's the detail that you want that person to do. So it will be talked about.
I am looking at you. So if you came out with this flow chart, you want us to prove to say, go to the treasurer, this is what this person's going to do. But what you're meanwhile saying, let's ask the treasurer if they want to do that or if they want to do more or less. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if you're supposed to be asking. I think you're supposed to be telling them. This is what your job description is going to be. And, and right now, they have no clue. They're, they've applied, they've, they've put their name in, but they have no idea what, what's going to be expected out of them. They, they have to have guidelines.
I don't have a problem with that, but if we're inviting Nancy in there and she's one of the candidates, I'm a little confused of why, which one are we doing and why are we doing it?
She is not-
I am not a candidate.
Oh. Well, I didn't know that until now. That's unfortunate.
So, so-
About the transition, that's why I think it would be good to do.
If you hadn't known that, I didn't know that. I thought she didn't care about that either. I just would like to hear.
The finance, how did, was it decided, how was it decided to make the treasurer and the financial department separate?
This is just a proposal from Russ, right?
This is just a proposal. This is just what typically happens when you separate from a, from a full-time treasurer's position or at least a, a multiple hour position to a financial department.
And this isn't new. We've been talking about this for several months.
Yes, but I'm just, this is-
This is not new.
This, these things are not new?
Those are not new. We have been, we have had those in front of us.
Treasurer hasn't- Treasurer hasn't, I mean, there was a time when the treasurer was a receiver of taxes.
That's correct.
And, but this is saying this would not be the treasurer.
That's correct.
And remember what you're appointing here is an interim treasurer. The treasurer's position will be elected in March.
So, yeah, but this is considered to be interim?
Yes, that's what we said just a while ago, is that what I am proposing, we just have to fill the gaps until March, until you find a full-time person. Or not a full-time person, but a, but a real treasurer.
Well, then we're still going to have to discuss, like the funding for the treasurer.
That's correct.
So we can either sit here and hope that we get a competent treasurer person running for the treasurer position?
We always hope that.
We always hope that, but there's really no way to adjust for that.
Well, yeah.
And when they call the office, they're going to ask, "Well, I'm interested, but what does the job insist of?" "Oh, I don't know."
And that's why, that's why Nimric is, you know, raking in coin from every town in the state of Vermont.
I totally understand that, yeah.
But on the other hand, we could, as long as we put enough money in there for the treasurer and put enough in for the finance department, if this new treasurer runs and says, you know, "I'd really like to work a little more, and I want to pick up some more of the financial department because it makes it easier for me to do." I mean, we should be flexible enough to build, but on the other hand, it could be, it could be just the opposite, a candidate that says, "I don't want nothing to do with that."
Some, there are towns that are now, you know, putting on their warning to have a, a, not an elected treasurer, appointed treasurer.
Changing their charter, we tried that once, did not work.
Got voted down, well.
Got voted down, it was very close on the, on the lister, but no, no, the other way around, close on the treasurer and not on the lister.
But essentially, that's what we would be doing if we go to the plan to have a chief financial officer and sort of a figurehead treasurer.
By state law, you have to have an elected treasurer.
So...
So, one way or another, if you change your charter, then you appoint the treasurer, you have to have a treasurer.
Right, no, I understand that, but, but in essence, if we go with the idea that we have a chief financial officer, that's kind of what we're doing. That's appointing, we are appointing a sort of treasurer, doing most of the job of the treasurer, and then the elected position would be stamping, right? Is that what you're essentially saying with this? Well, the, yeah, these are like, not...
Investing funds, I don't know if that's stamping.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the main, yeah, I mean, the main duties would be done by the financial officer.
There's no, is there, is there, this is a question on the state, is there guidelines that the state tells you that the treasurer department, once they're elected, will be in charge of this?
It's up to you folks to split the money to the, to the job.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we, so I'm going to kind of answer what Sue's asking.
Chip Sterns.
We have the flexibility to let somebody run, but we have the flexibility to write what their job description is going to be.
Chip Sterns sat in front of you and told you that a treasurer could be a person that truly is doing what Nancy's doing, just rubber stamping and going through the details of, of the transactions to make sure this is another set of eyes, and that could be it. Or it could be enhanced all the way through to, you know, what it used to be with, with Doreen, when she was, you know, the only eyes on the book, which is really not that good, as we all know.
There's a lot of, a lot of towns in state of Vermont don't have a town manager, so they, they lean on the town treasurer to do a lot more of what you're doing.
Yeah, and they, they, yeah, typically they have, you know, a select board member as, as second set of eyes, that's how they do the interim control. You have to have two sets of eyes at least.
You all set, Weaver? You up, can I bring, you want to talk about this later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we have to talk about the person, we can't go into executive session for certain things.
Right.
We can talk about candidates, but we can't talk about this.
Right, the content of the job, essentially.
Yeah.
That's why we're talking about it now.
Right.
All right, then you better tell us what the gaps are right now. If you don't want to do it then, then where are the gaps?
We can, we can go into executive session, when we come out, you'll have a better answer to what the gaps will be. And at that point, we will come out of executive session and do it in a public session. That's the only way you're going to get the full story of what's, what needs to happen.
So you can't tell us, you can't tell us from this?
Oh, I, I can't, I, this is, this is...
Then let's do it right now, let's...
Okay, this is the recommendation.
You tell me where the gaps are right now, or you tell the board where the gaps are, then we've got a bill.
Okay, you have to decide who's going to collect taxes and delinquent taxes. Right now, the delinquent taxes is on one side of the office, we have nobody collecting taxes, because the treasurer is not in the office full-time.
How about you are doing delinquent taxes?
I am doing, but I'm talking, I'm doing both right now, we're talking about both.
You just threw them both together, yeah.
So, you've got a collection of taxes, people are coming in already to pay February. We have a treasurer that, that is not there, we have Nimric that's not there. So we are taking it on our side of the office, being the financial department.
Good.
Legally, I can take taxes as town manager.
Yep.
So, I have been, so that's, that's a huge gap that's going to hit us hard in February. The longer we, you know, push this out, it's going, it's going to get more cumbersome. Again, the, the difference between what Nimric is doing and what the treasurer's doing, there's, there's still paperwork, and Nancy can speak to this, that the documents are not being, they're not being processed. We get the invoices, the invoices are being brought into our side of the office, Kelly is stamping them and coding them. She records it and puts them into the system, Nimric comes, fills out the, the, all the tax documents. But there's a, a gap of, of taking from what she has just installed into the system to the actual physical paperwork that is attached to the check that gets sent to our accounts within the, the municipal and state mandates. So, such as Beamers, health insurance, taxes, and what's the fourth one? Joe, total blank on this fourth one.
State and local?
No, no, it's just, it was the state of Vermont.
What's Beamers?
It's our retirement for all our employees.
Insurance.
The insurance, it was the insurance, it was Beamers, and taxes, and there was a fourth one, but it doesn't really matter at this point.
So it's all part of the payroll?
So it's part of the...
It's documentation of the payroll, it's not being documented?
Payroll and, and the, the taxes being pulled out of benefits. So again, in our...
Withholding, withholding taxes, you're documenting them?
Yes, and how do we pay them to the, to the state? So, in a perfect world, it would be, it would go in front of Kelly and myself, there's two sets of eyes seeing all the bills that come in. It's processed, it is actually installed into the system, she gives it to Nimric right now. Nimric takes it, she does her processing, she spits out the checks. No one right now is attaching the paper, she goes back to Kelly, Kelly attaches the documents needed to the, to the checks. Hence, we call Nancy, Nancy comes in, reconciliates, reconciles all of the, the documents, making sure the math is all correct, and then she writes her name on it. And the banking would go to, with her, as she's been doing.
And in the meantime, the select board approves...
Of course, you, you see the warrants.
All the warrants.
But when you're bringing that, like I signed the warrants today, when you're bringing it, I thought, when you're, you make, there's a check in there made out to, to the, you know, to whatever it is, to Nimric. And then it's got the copy of the bill.
If it's an invoice to the check.
And it's got the envelope that's going to be mailed out.
In, in an invoice, it's all done, it's those, it's the other ones that are, that are benefits as you pay. So every month...
You don't get a bill, you, what you're saying is there's not a generated bill, like the phone bill?
That's correct. It is, it's, it's a mandated tax...
There's a payroll report that's always associated with that.
And that would help with this.
We do not have that report.
You're not generating a, a statement yourself, you just automatically know there's a statement saying that...
That's correct, and that's what we needed to do. We need to, we need to...
So it'd be like even the savings account, the 401, or something like that, where you automatically take it out and you send it to them, but you're not really generating a statement?
That's exactly, exactly right.
All right, where else?
I, I think that's the biggest gray areas that I see right now. Taxes, when we, when we get rid of Nimric, then there's going to be other...
What's the difference between maintaining bank records and balancing the checkbook? I mean, bank records is the checkbook, or am I missing something?
Bank records are, is the, is sure, the, the interest that we create when we do the, what do they call that, the switch? The, every night, our monies are taken from us, they're put into an interest bearing sweep, thank you, and then brought back to us, and that's bank record keeping. Someone has to know what was generated for interest within that account. So, that's, that's where we're, someone needs to be watching that account, making sure that we're earning the correct interest.
There is a formula for that, that when you make the investment, you can do the formula, and you'll know how much you should have, and that's important.
Correct, and then you just, you have to rectify to making sure that that is exactly what they did pay. So, that's maintaining the bank records.
As well as any accounts other than checking accounts also have to be...
Also looking at the interest, making sure that that bank that we've chosen is, is giving us the, the best bang for our buck. It's got more, you know, it's got better interest rate than, than bank C, so...
So taxes, payroll, holding, the payroll report, and warrants, the signage, or what was the fourth thing?
The warrants are, they're working, I'm doing them, I'm running them to you guys when I need to, that seems to be working. Nancy's has got, Wednesday afternoon is her day to, to sign, so typically, we aren't waiting until the signature of me, I am...
You haven't, you haven't really come up with a description of, well, in my mind, you haven't yet anyway. This... Trying to describe it, so this, the withholding and so forth, is, it's, the withhold, the withholding of retirement taxes and so forth, we can throw that all into one figure? Or one, basically, department, one job that is not being, it's not...
In my mind, should come back to the financial department, so that we have it, we take, do the last double check of the bank statements. When we staple it together, we hand it to Nancy at this point, she has all of the documents attached, so she can do what she has to, which is verify the check to the, to the actual statement, you know, and/or the bill.
Okay.
So...
And don't forget, you also have Rockingham, the, the school district.
That's correct.
Where on Thursday you have to track down to.
Yeah, that, that is it.
Rockingham and sign there.
This process of maintaining school financial...
School and fire and...
And I was curious on that, I'm going to say, that's not just a stamp, I mean, that's a, that's the treasurer's...
They have a financial person, they, they do everything except, and you can ask Nancy, she's done it a couple times, just signing checks.
Really?
They have a full-time financial department, I know, I mean, correct?
Yes.
And the fires a little, little less...
Fire together submits the invoices.
But they have a lot less, they have a lot less to spend as well.
Exactly, yes, absolutely.
At least twice, according to Chris.
All right, when she's, when doing the school, she just goes through there, if Nancy has a question on that school, she's then calling that person up at the super... Or she just don't question, you just stamp it?
Well, I would, they go through it, and all I'm doing right now is signing. One thing to remember is when you appoint a treasurer, that treasurer is responsible for all the cash carried in the town, in the school district, and in the fire.
When we do our property taxes, and we're collecting 67% of it for the school, and as a town treasurer, you're, that's why I said, when we came to say you're just stamping it, you might be, but then you would think that you would also be looking at something to go on...
I am not distributing funds at this, at this point.
Right.
But a treasurer will do that, will have to do that.
Okay. Let's go on to, we aren't going to, we can pass this out some more.
I think we, we have to find out where we are after this meeting with the treasurer, then come, then come back to this, and that's all we may do.
Item C, WSWMD, representative resignation, new appointment needed.
I put in your packet on the front page, Janamine, I have decided to step down as Westminster's representative to Wyndham Solid Waste Management District, effective today, that was October 12th. A letter from Bob Spencer, Russ, here is the budget recommended by the financial committee from our meeting last night. Please have the select board consider appointment of a replacement for Westminster supervisory, supervisor to the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District. We also encourage appointment of an alternate. Our next BOs meeting is 11:08 at 7:00 P.M., with the financial committee meeting at 6:00 P.M.
You don't have a name, do you?
I do. I would like to do it for the time being.
Your mental stability is what?
Yeah, it is, but at, at this point in time, we have, we've seen the facility, we had some interesting conversations, and I'm pointing to Sheldon, Sheldon and I had some interesting conversations with where they're going, where their, their energies are, are going. And it could benefit us financially to be active in that, in that capacity.
I move the point, the town manager, Russ Hodgkin, as the, our representative to Wyndham...
Solid Waste, Solid Waste Management.
I'll second that. You want to do an alternate too, or not?
I do.
Want to do it at the same time, well, let's do this one first. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Russ Hodgkins, town manager, to, and there shouldn't be a conflict of interest that I can see.
Bradaburrow has done the same thing.
Into the WSWMD representative for Westminster, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Pat, the assistant town manager in Bradaburrow is their new person. They're getting more active in the finances of, of this, because it's so much money. So, yeah, it's, it's happening more and more. So anyway, that being said, attached is the first draft, I guess, of the assessment this year. Westminster dropped about 21% from 27,655 to, excuse me, 27,655 to 21,842. So that's good news. And also with that, you'll get reports monthly.
That's still an awful lot of money to be paying them for what they're doing for us.
Yep, and we'll figure out why.
Let's go back to the alternate, you have a name for them?
I do. Sheldon Beebe.
I was going to actually volunteer, but I nominate, you know, Sheldon Beebe as the alternate, W, easier for me to say it, WSWMD. Wyndham Solid Waste.
Second, second.
Third.
Okay, I've done duly.
And Russ is over laughing, because he's not going to go to any of the meetings, he's just going to make sure...
No, actually, well, motion's been made and seconded to make myself Sheldon Beebe, alternate to the Wyndham Solid Waste District, all those in favor signify... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, yeah, okay, we got our alternate, we got our, get that done. Photo purchase.
That photo, as you, um, are looking at, was given to us to purchase, um, if we want it, to sit in the lobby of the new town hall.
It's somebody's picture?
It's a gorgeous picture, it really does, um, it has been brought up to my attention that it is not all of Westminster, um.
But it's a better section.
It is the busiest section, and that's why.
It's a better section.
They took it.
So the Westminster West people can hear it, I don't care.
Who did the picture?
Um, it's in your packet, um. And that's the price sheet.
Was it done by the airplane, or was it by the new, uh, remote, what do you call it?
It's, it's the drone.
The drones.
So would we get the use of it for other things, we could put it on our new website?
I have asked, um, him that, and he, he hadn't mentioned that yet, so, um, there might be a feed to it, but, but, uh, yes.
We would like to.
Negative. This is for, for the public, if anybody else is interested in, in a photo, smaller version, or, or a bigger one. This is the twenty by twenty-eight, um, that's framed.
Did he give you the date?
I'm sorry?
Did he give you the date?
It was done just, uh, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Three weeks ago.
Can he do, can he do other area, can he do other?
He's done every town in the state of Vermont, except, I think he said twelve, and he's working on right this second.
But can he do other parts of the town?
I think he can, if we request it.
Okay.
But ask him again, because I would, I think you'd have the right to reproduce it, like on our website, or any other, in our, you know, town report.
This is the town who represents all areas of Westminster's, we probably should have west-west and north-Westminster.
He's got Harvilles and Hamilton, that's all you care, it's in the crowd. And it's got the, it got even more Dave Alvey lives. That's really important.
Okay.
Okay, so, do you need any action on that, or just, this is just information?
Yes, just information.
Okay, managers' report.
Just a couple of quick things, um, town hall renovation, phase two update. Um, we got our first, um, major inspections over with, fire safety came in, um, I was pleased with what they found. Um, recommendations of, of four-foot fire, um, stops, uh, in the elevator, uh, area, um, was your, your only, um, request, uh, which they were planning on doing anyway, which is good. And then the elevator people actually came and measured to the tolerances of, of the, um, the complete elevator shaft, et cetera, and they were dead on, so, um, they're moving forward at a fast rate now, um, back after it, get the, ready for, um, beginning of November for the actual installation of the unit.
There's a hundred talking when you say dead on.
So, yeah, I think we should have a picture of the work being done, put in the Gazette. So people know that it's, it, is the Gazette next week, the deadline, or have we passed it to this one?
Remember, the, the article said that Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fourth is actually on a Friday?
So it's this week, anyway, so it's, we're, we're, okay.
I think it's Wednesday.
Okay, Friday, don't just begin next week, so, yeah, I think it would be good to, to remind people that's happening.
Today's the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, but it's this week, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, you could probably take one and.
A three-two, a three-two, I'm sorry, it was yesterday.
It was Wednesday.
Sorry.
I was wondering what you were just thinking you were doing.
Sorry. Wrong day.
Yeah, I think it's possible to take one and get them in before Friday, but at least for next month.
Okay.
I think that would be a great idea.
Town, uh, report dedication, um, it's starting to get closer, so in your packet is the past recipients. Um, you folks are in charge of the town report dedication, and in the Gazette, I will, um, place an, an article to make sure that the citizen of the year nominations, um, by the public, um, will be, um, accepted in the next two months.
Who's doing the town report this year, Kelly?
Kelly is doing the town report, yeah, she did it last year.
Citizen of the year, that's the same, yeah.
Yeah, the citizen of the year is done by the public, you, and you guys make the final decision, and, and the town report dedication, you have to start getting together names yourselves. Toby, you brought up, um, the Bradler reformer article last meeting. Um, it is right here, I have it. It is. It, it all stemmed around, um, adding electrical service to Deer Run, um, and the peace and quiet disrupted is in that they're, they're feeling like development is going to take away their peace and quiet. So, it's not, um, anything that people are doing wrong, it's just, they feel the development of these five or six families that are off-grid, now one of them wants power, and we cannot deny that, that life.
Where is Deer Run?
It's off the street of road. So, the article was written, and I did talk to that, that person, um, prior to, and she said, what are you going to do about it? And, and there isn't anything a town can do about someone improving their conditions by getting, um, services. So, um, that's what that article was about. Um, and then just, last thing is, we are up to a full crew, with Mark being part-time. You got Chuck Lawrence, who is the trainee for the road reformer position, Dan Sacocchio, Carson Fulham, David Russell. Jarrett Sanderson is, um, one of the new guys, and Jason Benson is the newest, um, person. So we do have, for winter, we have, uh, six and a half people.
Cool.
Let me get back a minute, just for the town report, what's the deadline for finishing that, in the middle of January or something?
Sorry?
The town report, when is it supposed to be done? I'd like to take a look at it while she's developing.
She has to have two printers, um, in the, I, I think it's the first week in February, or we don't get it in, into hand before the, the fifteen days before town meeting.
Yeah.
So, um. That is off the top of my head, um, she would know better.
Okay.
I know she's asking for everyone to get their stuff to her by the first or second week in January, so that she can format it, put it together, and then get it to the printer. That's it.
Cool.
Mark has been contracted to stay on until. I, I think it's, I'm going to be quoted on this, um, just throughout the, it's just through the winter, until spring.
My question is, why did he retire and come back to work?
To help the town train, um, a new road reformer. When Ron left, it kind of left us high and dry with no trainee and no trainer, so he came back.
But he's only back half time, he's still retired.
Right, he was part-time. And he was bored. Yeah.
Are we paying his insurance, everything? No, he's, he's working his insurance, that's why he came back, so we're paying him by the hour, but he's paying for his own insurance.
Boards and commissions?
There's no new news for there.
Nothing new, everything filled, or not?
No, no, planning commission still only has three, um, folks, we need two more. They're, um, in the process of, of, uh, asking a few people.
Okay, any other business at this time? I won't jump at it. Uh, day of the next meeting is November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, we'll go into executive session and, and take a short break.
Well, you're right there, you're on camera, are you going to say where we're having the meeting?
Where we're having what meeting?
Next meeting.
November fourteenth, Institute.
I didn't know.
Unless you want it differently. I have every Wednesday for you guys, um, document for that.
I have it, of course, Mr. West, I know. Might be a little chilly.
No, I didn't know why we're coming back here, because this is a nice place.
So you're back at the institute?
I don't know, this is a nice place. It's warm.
See if you can get in again.
Do you want it here, then?
I think it's a lot nicer place, I hate to say it.
Yeah, can we leave the picture to four?
I think we should switch back and forth, I swear.
The acu, the acoustics are better here, probably.
Well, that is true.
You done?
I'm done.